Twenty-three Tana Pecy's zoning board of appeals. If you'll please rise, we pledge allegiance. Christine?
Here.
Art?
I think I'm here.
Phyllis?
Here.
Tony G?
Here.
Tony S?
Here.
Larry is absent, but we still have a quorum, so we can proceed. For any of you unfamiliar with the proceedings before the zoning board of appeals, there's an agenda up here. Each item will be taken in the order that it's on the agenda. The applicant will come forward, be sworn, describe their application. Audience will have an opportunity to comment on the application. They likewise will be sworn. You can either appear in person or virtually through Zoom or on a phone. And so, let us begin. Item number one, that splash car wash. There's a request to adjourn that, so I'll move to adjourn this to the December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Exactly.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number two. Sharon Lopez, Ten Hollow Lane. Someone here for that application? I see someone on iPhone, but I think you're muted. Let me see if I can help with that.
I am here, as well as my wife. My wife is Sharon Lopez. My name is Neil Kaplan. I will let Sharon unmute herself and tell you about the, about the appeal.
Okay, so each of you will be sworn? Or who was ever going to speak?
Sharon and Neil, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I don't.
All right, why don't you describe your application? Shannon?
Oh, well, we applied for a variance for our fence. We're trying to put a fence in our backyard, which now we learned that it's a backyard and a front yard, because we have a corner lot. And we're told by the, by the town that it has to be thirty feet from the property line. And for us, the, the exact mark of thirty feet is a tree. It's a beautiful, I don't know what it is. It's a beautiful tree, right, right at the thirty mark. So we're trying to see if we're allowed to put the fence at the twenty-foot mark, which would save a beautiful tree. We don't want to harm a tree in, in the process.
Okay. So, are you able to put it, rather than on the street side of the tree, on the house side of the tree, so that you wouldn't need a variance?
Um, we could go inside the tree, but that would give us an awfully small, private backyard. Respectfully, one of the main reasons that we were purchasing a house was we got tired of apartment living. I am still here in Los Angeles in our apartment, as we try to wrap up our affairs out here in California. The, 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 the private backyard is mostly to enjoy with our dog and enjoy with family, with a little bit of privacy, without people just being able to peek in and, you know, it's, it's, I'm fifty-six years old, I've worked pretty hard to have a house. I'd like at least one yard with some privacy. You know, we're not putting any fencing on the front of the house, nothing to interfere with the, the visual aspects of being able to see across the, across the yard for oncoming traffic, or, you know, nothing that's going to interfere with the beautiful and sedate nature of, of the neighborhood, quite frankly.
I notice in the, the rest of the backyard, it's a white PVC fence. Is that what you intend on completing?
Yeah.
The fencing project?
Yes. Yes, sir.
That's all I have. Christine?
So, to, to put a, a six-foot fence on, on that side of the road there, would, would you consider a, a lower fence that wouldn't make it look so much like, you know, a compound?
Well, I, first off, I would, I would address the issue of the use of the term "compound," because we're not surrounding the entire house. So, all it would look like is a private yard. A compound by nature would be a fence around the entire property itself.
Well, maybe that's not the correct word, I just...
And that's, and that's specifically what, what we are avoiding. Now, in regards to a forty-two-inch fence at twenty feet, if, if that's the compromise that we have to come to, to be able to have a larger yard, yeah, we, we would absolutely be willing to do that. Obviously, our, our appeal is, is for the full six-foot fence. It, it's not, it's not anything that's close to, it, it doesn't interfere with any sightlines of any of our neighbors. You know, if I, if I may interject, just a, a small anecdote. My wife used to work in the Capitol Records building in Hollywood, and before she left, she was told that her office would no longer have a view of the Hollywood sign, because a building was being put up that was going to completely block their view. And that is not what we're doing at all. We're, we're keeping, we're keeping the fence at about my height, quite frankly, and, you know, there's, there's no window within a hundred yards of where that fence is going to be, so no one is going to be, there won't be any interference with somebody being able to see the beautiful night sky, the stars.
And the wildlife.
The trees, or, or the wildlife, I mean, you know, but I don't, I'll, I'll address that i- if it comes up, but...
I, I do want to say, hold, hold that thought, honey. I do want to say that when we went to Adams Fences back in August, when we went into contract with this house, the, we didn't want that PVC fence. We kind of found it a little, you know, a solid wall of white, and we wanted to get either a picket or lattice, or something with a decorative look ourselves, because we thought aesthetically it would be nicer for us, not just for the neighbors. But because we have a, a yard that has a lot of gradation, it starts very high, and then it starts sloping down, the lattice, any kind of fence that's not this type of a fence, would have to be stepped down, and it would be like a ladder, and then it would have a huge gap at each, at each, at each panel. And frankly, he said that a dog, you know, that's, you know, even a foot tall, could escape, which sort of defeated the purpose of the fence. And we were like, oh, so we, can we do this fence? No, you can't do that, because it doesn't have the interlocking mechanism that this type of fence does, and gradually slopes down. And that was the main reason and only reason we went with this type of fence. It was not our first choice. It was not, frankly, even a consideration for us. We didn't even like it. But it was the only choice that we were left with because of the gradation of the yard.
Okay. Art?
Yeah, um, let me ask you this. If you want to a forty-two-inch fence, and then put some plantings in front of it to give you the privacy with, you know, trees with that?
And, and, and that certainly is, is an option. I, I think by, I, I'm not exactly sure what the difference would be, you know, if we got six-foot bushes, you know, on the other side of the fence, but if that's what we need to do, it's certainly something we can look into in the spring after putting the, the smaller fence in. Yeah.
You know, just a thought that might make this go easier for you.
Sure, 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 and, and...
Absolutely.
You know, it does give us the, 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 the visual, you know, assuming that we wouldn't run into the same issues, because the, the, the bushes or trees would be too tall.
Just so the boards are aware, the forty-two inches, that's what's, that's allowed under the code.
Right.
So...
Right. But he's worried about people looking in for privacy. So, we have, I don't think we...
And, and if the, and, and if the, the, the shrubbery that you were mentioning, if that's allowable by, by the code, and the agreement that we come to today is forty-two inches, yeah, I, I certainly think that we could look into something like that in the spring or summer. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we've never really had a problem with pepper greens or anything of any height.
No?
We've never, and I can recall, turned down shrubbery like that.
Okay.
So, and where, where at the property line? Because we were told that there has to be thirty foot from the property line, and the thirty-foot mark is that absolute gorgeous tree, beautiful, healthy, living tree. So, we wanted to, we wanted to...
And I, I would, I would guesstimate from the height and the width of the trunk, that the tree's probably about thirty-five years old or so. So it's been there for a while.
So the thirty-foot setback is for something in excess of the allowed three-and-a-half feet?
Oh, okay.
That's why you needed a variance, because you wanted something greater, a fence greater than three-and-a-half feet, within thirty feet of the front yard, the front yard setback.
Understood.
Okay.
So just to clarify, sir, if you don't mind, that means that a forty-two-inch fence at twenty feet is, is within code?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
You just have to be, there are some other things you have to be aware of about where the, the right of way is for the actual roadway.
Sure. Understood.
And the fence that, the, the part of the fence that's already put up, I mean, that's already there. So we're talking about pushing whatever we have to complete, that has to be a different style of fence.
A different height?
No.
A different height, correct. So it could be the same style of that solid, but it has to be that forty-two inches.
If that's what you wanted, keep it the same style, but it's...
And, and also to, to clarify, the line on the back of the house is, is tree-lined, so that side could be six feet all the way to the end. Just, we're talking about the street-facing side, correct?
So long as it's, so long as it's within the thirty feet of the front, of the, what would be the front yard setback towards that roadway.
I think if I can answer your question, I'm, for those who may not know, I'm the attorney for the ZBA. Technically, you would need everything that is from the house over to be forty-two inches. So it would even be the back line and the front line of that house. The ZBA, since you're here, could consider perhaps allowing six feet on the back and the front, since that wouldn't affect the visual impacts that might affect the neighbors. But technically, everything that is in your front yard, which is from your house to the road thirty feet, or from your property line thirty feet back, has to be forty-two inches.
So, for instance, the bit of the fence that we've already had installed, technically, until we get an approval, is out of code? Because it's six feet.
I don't, I don't recall if that extended past the end of your house.
No, not.
Yeah.
No, no. That's further than thirty feet. I think that's like thirty-eight feet or thirty-seven. Yeah, because they did go, they did go past the tree, because they didn't want to go into the roots of the tree, and they didn't know if we could continue. So I know that it's past the tree, which is thirty feet, it might be like thirty-six, thirty-seven, where that ends right there. So I guess from there on, to the street, or wherever we decide that we want to finish it, then that would be the lower height.
You provided a diagram with dotted lines indicating the, what you proposed. Along the back of your house, that dotted line? Is that, is all of that completed?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So that does extend past the end of your house?
It does not extend past the end of the house, no.
Well, if I draw a line from the south side of your house, where your driveway is, in line with that, does the fence extend past that? Parallel line?
No. No, the, the completed portion of the fence does not, does not get up to, to the driveway, no.
No.
Not the driveway. That side, that's, that's end of the house.
Right.
Okay.
No, we, we, we had them, we had them stop basically at the end of the house until the, the meeting.
All right, that was my recollection, but I, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, no, I've seen the, the footage from the security cameras, and I'm, that's how I recollect it, yes.
It's, it's closer to the deck. Yeah.
Okay. All right, Phyllis?
So I was out at the house yesterday, and you had stakes that were kind of like marking in the, in the lawn. Is that where you would put the fence? Whether it's forty-two or six feet, is that where it's planning on being put?
That's what we'd like it, yes.
Okay. Okay.
That's it, thank you.
And I believe that's, okay, thank you.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
Uh, no questions.
All right. There is a letter that I'll read into the record, and then anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this will have an opportunity. This is a letter from Janine Vale at Thirty-One Fairway, right across the street from Ten Hollow Lane. I plan to attend the public hearing. Are you here? Okay. Although I'm not opposed to a fence.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, then, then you can read the letter. All right, you can go ahead, Ms. Vale.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Vale?
Yes, hi.
Hi, just identify, just state your name, and then you'll be sworn?
Okay. Um, Janine Vale?
Ms. Vale, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, what would you like to comment on? What would you like to say?
I'm sorry?
What would you like to say?
Oh, um, I was just, um, what, what, my, my letter, should I read my letter?
If, if, I'll read it, or you can state it, whichever you prefer.
Only concern, I, uh, we're not opposed to a fence. Everyone wants privacy. I was just, I was just concerned about the height of the fence, being that my window faces directly to it. So I was just concerned about, I was concerned about, about how it would look, and I also concerned, and then how it would affect the home of my value, let's say, if I wanted to, to, to sell my house.
Well, I, I can't, I can't answer either one of those questions. I don't know how it's going to look. I mean, you can get an idea of how it looks based upon the fence that's already there, but I, I cannot tell you whether or not it will affect any of your, your value.
It was, I was just voicing my concerns, that's, that's all.
Okay. All right, I'm going to introduce your letter. Your letter will be part of the record.
Okay.
Okay? All right. And is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this application? Come on up and state your name. Thank you. Right, right up there? Have a seat in front of the microphone, state your name.
My name is Greg Gow. I live opposite the house. I think the house faces the...
Okay. Greg, tell me, I just...
Have a seat, so, and speak into the microphone, so it can be recorded.
My name is, uh, I'm Greg Gow. My wife would be with me tonight, however, she's not feeling well.
Mr. Gow, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, we are Greg and Ruth Gow. We reside at Twenty-Nine Fairway, Poughkeepsie, which is across the street from Ten Hollow Lane, Poughkeepsie, where the new owners proposed to construct a six-foot, white vinyl fence in clear view of our house. We've resided in, on Fairway for twenty, over thirty years. The area is safe, it's friendly, it's inviting. Previous owners have had children, dogs, ranging from a huge Irish wolfhound to a small French bulldog. During that time, no one is viewed it necessary to construct a large fence in that area. We find the fence proposed by the new owners is objectionable, as it obstructs views, thus making the area appear closed off, uninviting, unneighborly, and definitely not picturesque. The fence also has the potential to limit the line of sight to the intersection at Fairway and Hollow Lane. In addition, it could impact the desirability of homes that are facing the fencing project. We're on a dead-end street, Fairway is. People go up the hill, and they get frustrated, and then they come down the hill very fast sometimes. I'm worried about anything that interferes with that line of sight, seeing that intersection. I'm concerned about that. But I'm more, I just don't like the, looking at that particular type of thing out my window. In other words, I don't think it's a fair thing to do. We spent a lot of money, we faced the golf course, and we've actually opened it up. There's, we have a ten-to-two-foot fence in front of us, chain links. We've cut down all the vegetation around it. We want clear view, unobstructive view. We do like to see the trees, we do like open space, and not having any restriction. I'm sorry that this has had to happen. This is the first time I've done something like this, and it's not, no, I can't say that either. I saw the variance for a place in, outside of Saratoga. But, and we never went through with it, because we felt, in the end, it wasn't the right thing to do. So that's basically what I have to say. It's disappointing. This is not a good way to begin things. We've lived there, again, thirty years. I'm eighty-one, so I've worked hard for the house, too. And it's simply, you know, that type of thing. So I'd appreciate, you know, I'm glad, thank you for listening to me. You know, I, I'm sorry for the situation like this. We haven't even met the people. I have no idea. Till I saw the picture here, I had no idea. Some guy could say, well, it's my fault for not going over and introducing myself, but this is a, sort of a curveball we received, I think, in a way. That's not right. But, again, it's your decision. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Do the applicants have any comments in response to any of the other comments?
Absolutely.
All right, and I'll take that and make part of the record.
I'm, I'm certainly concerned with what the gentleman raised about people speeding down a dead-end street. When they get, when they apparently go up a dead-end street, find out it's a dead-end street, and he's telling me now, and he's lived there for thirty years, that people then turn around and speed out of the area. Well, now I'm even more interested in having a fence. I don't want somebody running into my backyard, because they're frustrated being on a dead-end street. I'm, I'm shocked to hear such a thing, but if he's testifying that that's what people do after thirty years of living there, I've got to take his word for it, I suppose.
About this. I heard what you said, I'm going to listen to what he said, and we'll make a decision based upon...
I, 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 I will mention that I know the gentleman's house. It's a lovely white house, it's down the street. It's toward the corner of Hollow and, and, forgive me for not knowing the, the...
Fairway.
Fairways. It's the corner of Fairway and Hollow, where our fence is going to be up Fairway, it's not out his front door. It's certainly not visually obstructive in the least. He has a, a nice, clear view of the neighborhood out, out his front door. We are not putting a fence around the front of the house at all. He can see our three lovely trees in the front yard. They're, they're very beautiful and, and sedate. I, I, I agree with that. But we're talking about a six-foot fence, and from his angle and being, I, I would say he's closer to two hundred yards, three hundred yards away. Three hundred yards, a six-foot fence at that angle is no obstruction at all. We're not putting up anything garish. We're not putting up some odd color. It's certainly not going to be thrust up into the sky, blocking anyone's view of any of the trees, or the sky, or anything like that. I, I, regarding the visual aspect of it, it is so far away, so far removed from the corner itself, that there's no possible way that anyone who's driving under thirty miles an hour, and we all know that in that neighborhood you should be driving fifteen, you know, but anyone who's driving thirty or thirty miles an hour, thirty-five miles an hour in that neighborhood, is still going to have a completely clear view. And we're talking about a T-intersection. It's not even a four-way intersection. It's a T-intersection into a dead-end street. The amount of traffic that goes up there, I am guessing, is very, very small. I, I've only been there a few times, my wife has lived there for a, a, a little over a month now, and I just think that, you know, it's, it's not going to be visually obtrusive, it's not going to be dangerous for anybody who's driving in the area, it's not going to interfere with any of our neighbors being able to see the sky, the sunset, the sunrise, the, the trees. It's nothing even remotely close, respectfully, you know? But that's what I would have to say in, in, in reaction to my new neighbor.
Okay. Anyone else who wanted to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, I don't see anyone on Zoom, and so I'll move to close the public hearing. Any discussion?
If, if I could just clarify one thing before the public hearing is closed. The applicant stated that they wanted twenty feet back, but the, what submitted shows sixteen feet, eight inches. I know it's a slight difference, but being the lawyer, I have to ask, sixteen feet, eight inches is the request, or twenty feet?
No, I, I, I think, I think twenty feet is the request.
Twenty. I think that when, yeah, when, when Adams was measuring, they thought that maybe the root of the tree went up to twenty, and, but, but for us, twenty. I've asked some root spec, some tree specialists, actually the people that cut my, my tree bushes and a few trees that were dead, they told me that there's ways around that, at that point of the tree, that you will not harm the tree. Because that was a big deal for me. I said, I do not want to harm, drill into the ground and find that we harmed that tree, and five, six years down the road, there's tree rot, because we drilled that root. And the safe number was sixteen, but we didn't want to be at sixteen. We said twenty was the, the number.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Then all those in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Then that motion carries. And just to, I'm sorry, I didn't say this in the beginning, we'll go through each of the applications at the end, when each application is closed. At the end of the meeting will be a deliberation, no further testimony or evidence is taken at that time, and we'll make a decision on each of the applications. You can either wait for that, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning. Okay? That brings us to item number three.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Amy Maher, Amy Maher, Forty-Seven Marple Road. If you want to come up. Can I state your name, please?
My name is Amy Maher.
Todd Sobs?
Carlo Mezarelli from Mezarelli Architecture and Planning.
Do you each swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe this application?
Okay, so what we're seeking is a variance, seven, a twelve-foot, six-inch variance. We're looking to do an addition toward the back of my house. So off of the back of our existing house, we're looking to add an addition that has, we're expanding our family, so it has another bedroom and bathroom, but we need the variance, because we are on a corner lot, Forty-Seven Marple Road, and there is the side yard, which is actually Ray Boulevard. I guess they, they consider that a front yard, but we do have, we got a variance to have our fence put up, so right now, that, it's a completely fenced-in backyard, and the proposed addition is not going to encroach on any part of the side... not going to encroach on any part of the side of the house or the front of the house.
Okay. And based upon the diagram, um, that you supplied, it appears that the addition is in the same line as the edge of the house. Is that accurate?
Yes, exact, yep.
Okay, and you intend to follow that?
Yes.
So there's no greater encroachment onto that, what it would be the front yard?
No.
Than, than currently for the existing house?
Nope.
Okay. And by nope, you mean correct?
Correct.
And, um, if I recall along Ray Boulevard, is there a change in topography there where it's a little Ray Boulevard kind of goes up in the back?
Yes.
Okay. And so that would also offer a greater shielding from the addition? Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes, and I have very mature trees that line Ray Boulevard, so you can't even see into my backyard.
Okay. All right, those are the questions I have. Christine?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Phyllis?
No question.
Tony?
No question.
Tony?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience, anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this.
There is, okay, so the folks that are on the Zoom, but I know you're listening by phone, if you, on your phone, if you hit star six, that should unmute you?
Hello?
Yeah?
Oh, you can hear us?
Yes, we hear you. Yeah?
All right, if you'd state your names?
Jeffrey and Pamela Woodward.
Mr. and Mrs. Woodward, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I, we do. I do.
All right, what would you like to say?
Oh, uh, we own the house on fifty-eight Ray Boulevard. I, that's directly behind, I, I think the house we're talking about on the corner. Um, so I haven't seen the diagram. Uh, we haven't seen it, so we don't really know, um, what is being referred to when the, um, the owner is speaking of the backyard, which butts right up to, um, our backyard, fifty-eight Ray.
So if you have, if you go on your computer, you can look at the town website and all, all the information is there under the meeting for the ZBA?
Hey, I thought I would see it on the Zoom, um, at some point, um, but we haven't seen that yet. Um, uh, but I think, um, Ms. Maher, is that her name?
Yes.
Um, you could explain, uh, where her backyard is, where, what, how it's going to change?
Okay, yes, so we are planning on doing an addition extending the house to the backyard. I currently have a stone patio in the backyard.
Yeah, yeah.
It's off of.
Right.
My deck. So this, this addition is only going to go back twenty feet. So it's not even going to take up that entire stone patio, but we're not going any, anywhere closer to where I, I had a swing set by the fence where my children play. We took that down, so it's, it's not going to be close to the fence.
Now, the other question is, will it, the, um, oh, there's a beautiful, um, tree in the back, I think it's a magnolia tree. Will that still be unaffected by the, uh, addition?
Yeah, I'm hoping to.
Your tree.
I'm, I'm hoping to keep all of my trees because it does look nice and it's also nice, you know, privacy for everybody. So I, I don't want to take down any of those trees.
And the final question I had is, is this going to be a single story, only?
Yes, it's just a single story.
Hey, well, at this point, it's, it sounds like it will be fine. Um, it will come closer to the wall that separates your yard from ours there. Um, so I'm not completely sure, but wasn't it said that it was going out in two different directions, like into two, side yard and two front yards or something?
No, it's, it's being built directly from the back corner of the house out to the back. We're not going to the side. We're not building in the front. Um, there's still going to be thirty feet from the edge of the new construction to the fence line. So thirty feet back to.
Okay.
To your property. Because I still, I still want to have grass in a yard, you know, not taking up the whole backyard.
Just out of curiosity, how high would the, um, the, the addition be? Would it be, uh, pretty much in line with the, um, the house as it is or taller?
No, this addition will be lower than the house as it is. It's only a single story. The house is, it's a one and a half story. So this will be lower.
Okay.
And we will not infringe on the rear yard requirement. We're thirty-three feet plus or minus from the rear yard. The code requires thirty feet.
All right, so just to clarify, the variance is not for the rear yard setback.
Correct.
They meet the rear yard setback. Uh, the variance was really just for one of what looks like a side yard, but, but for the purposes of our zoning code, it's actually considered a second front yard because it's a corner lot and that's why they needed the variance. But they're not getting any closer to Ray Boulevard than the house currently is. And again, they're going to be.
Okay.
Yeah, so hopefully that helps.
Not clear why they needed a variance for that if it's not any closer than it is now.
Well, because the existing house is within that setback. So any addition required in a variance?
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. I'm sorry we didn't look at the diagram ahead of time. I didn't know it would be there, so.
Okay.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on this application? All right, I don't see anyone in the audience. I don't see anyone on Zoom, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
And again, you can wait till the end of the meeting or you can find out in the morning.
Thank you.
Uh, that brings us to item number four, Oakwood Partners, twenty-five fifteen South
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Kaminsky, representing Oakwood Partners LLC.
Uh, my name is Kevin Kukomo. Good evening.
Do you, do you each swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, why don't you describe this application?
Good evening, sir. So I think a little bit of history might help in trying to give some background as to where we are tonight. Some of you were on this board, uh, back in between two thousand five and two thousand seven, when we developed this project, uh, and went through the approval process with the town. At the time, the business park overlay did not exist and this board granted that project thirty-eight use variances, excuse me, uh, area variances in order for that project to happen. Subsequent to that, we worked with the town board and the planning board and we created with the town, the business park overlay district, which did away with all those variances and brought us into conformance with the town code. At some point subsequent to that, um, the town decided to make changes to the business park overlay, uh, including the signage, which has now placed the, the project in several instances, including this request for this signage to be again in nonconformance. Doesn't make sense to me, but that's, that's where we find ourselves. Um, as a part of the approval process for the tenants that first came into the project, there were numerous sign, signage variances issued. One of them was for the sign you see there for the KeyBank. It was not to be able to put it on the fifth floor because that was permitted at that time under the business park overlay. It was for the size of the sign. Back then, you could only do a twenty-four square foot sign. Now what is permitted is a hundred square foot sign. Uh, I think what, in the write-ups that I've read, there's been a mistake also, or maybe not understanding the history, it was mentioned that, uh, approval for being above the second floor was granted on the other building for Caremount twice for their two signs and now for Optum for the two signs that have been, uh, that have been modified on that building. Well, this building also received a variance. The building, our, our building, if you recall when it was first built, we had a tenant that had two and a half floors in the building, uh, by the name of CRM, changed their name to Majestic. So we twice came before this board and we received a variance both times to have a sign above the fifth floor on the blade wall of this building. The blade wall is the silver portion. So the variance we seek tonight, um, is based on the current code, uh, of the business park overlay district, which requires signs to be, or it states that signs have to be at the second floor level. Uh, we're seeking to continue signage that has been on our building since two thousand seven. The KeyBank signage was taken down in June, uh, when KeyBank vacated. Northwestern Mutual has been a tenant of ours for ten years. Uh, Kevin is the lead, uh, lead person work, working in the office. They have expanded from about a five thousand square foot tenant to an eight thousand, eight hundred square foot tenant, and we think the signage is very important to them. Um, it was mentioned in, by, by the county and the town, um, that they thought that the pylon signage that we have should be sufficient as far as directional signage for someone trying to find Northwestern Mutual. This is a company that operates very much, uh, like the previous tenant, KeyBank that we had there. They have numerous people visiting their space on a daily basis. Uh, when you drive north on Route nine, you definitely see our pylon. Uh, when you come past the Spacken Kill Cloverleaf, there's traffic signal right there, so there's a calming measure. The pylon is very prominent, very easy to see. When you're driving south on Route nine, if you, because of the different accesses into access, accessways into Oakwood Commons, you wouldn't see that pylon until you get to the very last driveway. And given the size of the trees that we worked with, with the town, some of you may not remember or may not recall that we preserved all those trees along Route nine when we did that project and the ones that we had to take down that were sick, we replaced with eight inch caliper trees. Those trees completely block that pylon coming southbound during the summer months. So there's no one that sees the Northwestern Mutual sign. So it's another reason why we think the building top, building fifth floor signage for Northwestern Mutual is important. Uh, it's under the hundred square feet. And Kevin, if you'd like to say a, a few words, please, please, Joe.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Um, just to kind of summarize and, uh, add to that overall, um, I've been at Northwestern for over a decade. Um, I've seen it come from, we've only had about ten employees when I first started. Uh, there's about seventy people that operate directly here in, in the county overall. Um, our vision is to continue to keep growing and I think that would be an enhancement to our ability to do so, um, brand awareness, identity, but also our clients on a day-to-day basis, um, don't always find the building on time and, and, you know, a lot of times that they, they don't, you know, arrive at their appointments on time because they can't find it very easily. I think that would help with, you know, overall awareness for our clientele. We have, you know, probably thirty or forty people that visit that office every day that's not, you know, working directly in the office, uh, but as well as just brand awareness as well. We, we've been around a hundred and sixty years. We're a Fortune ninety company. We're in the, in corporations in the world. We're in the top twenty for largest corporations in the world. We're a very big company. We don't plan to go anywhere anytime soon and we plan to continue to grow and it's going to help overall with a lot of that stuff. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this? I don't see anyone. Tony, ask, any questions?
Your building, is your building substantially the same size as, as the building with the Optum sign?
Yes, sir. We both, uh, with, uh, both buildings were designed as a mirror image of each other. They're each approximately sixty-seven thousand square feet.
Okay, and they're the two tallest buildings in the whole place?
In, in Oakwood Commons?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Tony G?
No question.
Um, and, and, you know, you mentioned the trees. Was it this one or the next one that had the tree? Oh, it's the next one. Okay. Um, I, I had a question for Lisa. Um, did you get my, my voicemail message?
I saw it just a minute ago. Um, you were asking if the, because the zoning code now provides that once the building is vacated, the variance is in? Was that the, the question?
And if that in any way changes the analysis that we would make in granting a new variance. I understand, you know, we used the precedent in, uh, for establishing or authorizing the variance in the other building, but I'm wondering if the analysis in, for this building in any way changes.
Well, I think the analysis might be the same for the other building now because both of them were changes in use, so technically, um, didn't Optum replace another, a user that was there before?
Yeah, the Caremount, Caremount just became Optum, so.
Oh, so it was a branding change, not a use?
Correct. They're both medical providers.
Yes, I don't. If it were, for example, a change in brand so that the name of the company changed, then perhaps there would be more reason to allow the change in sign as precedent, not as precedent, but because it's the same building and, you know, that they're having a name change, it's not a new user, a new use in the space. Um, but I think it's sort of a distinct question from the precedent question because the precedent is more from the use standpoint, the, you know, um, the view, the size, the how long it's been there, those are the precedents. So I think it, it comes into play somewhat, but I don't think it's determinative. Not a hundred percent answer.
All right, all right. Phyllis?
Mr. Chairman, do you know how large the, the Optum sign is?
Oh, I do know. I don't know that. Chrissy, do you know the sign of the, size of, or perhaps, you know, the size of the Optum sign? I don't recall.
Sixty-something square feet, sixty-eight or something along those lines. I remember. You said it couldn't be bigger than, uh, what the, the variance had been granted before for Caremount. You didn't know the Caremount sign was too big.
Right, okay, that's what I recall.
Yeah.
And this is larger than that?
Um, yeah, I think, I don't know. How big is the sign?
Ninety, ninety-five, something like that.
No, we're at seventy-three point five.
Seventy-three.
Yes, sir. Which is smaller than the KeyBank sign that you see in the previous photo?
Right.
How much smaller?
Uh, several square feet. I would think it was seventy-seven or something. Hold on.
Thank you.
KeyBank did not have a logo where Northwestern Mutual has a logo, so the, the, the letters are actually much smaller than even Optum.
Key had the key.
Even it had the key, though.
Yeah, there's a logo.
It did?
Yeah.
Okay, it did. I'm sorry.
All right.
Less of an eyesore.
Yeah.
All right, Art?
I mean, it's a smaller sign. It's a massive building. I don't really have any questions.
And Christine?
Yeah, no questions.
And you recognize, of course, that the county recommended denial of the application? As well as our staff?
Yeah, I, I mean, the only comment I have is the wording they use in their, in their.
Reluctantly.
I reluctantly said that I thought the precedent should apply. That was my, the only comment, Mr. Chairman, I have. I've had this comment with the county before numerous times and many of the projects I've done here is their, their language is incorrect. They, they state several times this is a prohibited sign and that is not a true statement. This is not a prohibited sign. That's what the ZBA is here for. That's what a use var, excuse me, a area variance is for. It's not prohibited.
Uh, if there's anything else?
If I could just ask, the sign goes off when the business closes, right? It's not going to be on all night. It will adhere to the.
No, I believe, I believe all of our signage stays on at night. Is there, is there a code that.
There's a code that says either eleven PM or whenever the, the business closes, whatever's later. Is my recollection, but.
I'll, I'll check that. If that's code, we'll, we'll, we'll comply with that. I was never aware of that.
That'd be great, though. Kind of go dark at night.
Interesting. Okay.
Because of summer.
Okay. Then if there's nothing else, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, simply by eye?
Thank you very much.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number five, Emergency 1, 2555 South Road.
Good evening.
If you'd state your name.
Jim, Jim Devitt.
Mr. Devitt, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right, would you describe your application?
We're looking for a signed variance on the north side of the building. The, I believe it's 100 square foot is the maximum allowed. Our request is much less than that. Paul is on his way from timely signs. He has not arrived yet, but he'll have all the specs if you have any additional questions on that. I have read the letter, and I respect the comments in there, and I understand some of the things that you might be referencing there, but I can kind of do a ditto of the testimony we just heard with Oakwood in the sense that from the northbound side, everything's fine. I mean, the visibility is great, but from the southbound side, you cannot see, you do not know what our facility is until you've literally gotten to the driveway to turn in. And as you know, Route 9 is a very fast-moving road, and many times people miss that, and then they have to play the U-turn game going down Route 9 till they can make a U-turn, come back down, make another U-turn at the Price Chopper's light that's right there before they can turn into our place. We rely solely on visitors daily coming into our facility, both for urgent care, medical care, as well as occupational health. In fact, Town of Poughkeepsie, we do quite a bit of work for, you know, within our occupational health, and those people are on the clock, and when they have to go and spend an extra 15 minutes turning around before they get in our facility, now they're late for their appointment, and everything is delayed, they're, they're on the clock longer, and that's not what our goal is. You know, we want to get people in and get people out. So what we're asking for is to be able to place a sign in that Eve section there, that big flat section on the north side. I did see the pictures that were in the letter, in your guys' response, and I understand that, you know, if you're on a Google car and you're 10 to 15 feet in the air, that you probably can see the signage, but most people don't travel that way. I did take some pictures that I'd like to share with the board if I could, and so you could see what we're talking about.
You can start with Tony.
And as you can see in the pictures, as you're coming from the northbound, are they south, the southbound lanes there, there's a lot of trees, and those trees were there before we ever came in. The signage that we have out front is the existing signage. We didn't look to change that when we moved in, and you literally cannot see what kind of business we are, but if you also look at the area there where we're trying to put the signage, you can see that as you're coming down Route 9 the whole way, and that would really suffice, you know, the visibility that we're looking for here. This has been a problem for us since we've moved in. I've called the, the town and filed formal requests to have those bushes that are along that side. There's a very large one right up front there. We do not own that bush. We don't have the right to trim it. We've been there since 2019, and nobody has put a clipper or an, or anything else to any of those bushes. They're just growing wild there, and many people think it's our property and it's our bushes, and it isn't, and we don't have the right to, to trim that down at all. And then, of course, the trees on the swale there, you know, it just, it blocks out the visibility completely.
So actually, these photographs answered one of my questions. In, in my, my interpretation of those photographs indicate that the tree lines, for the most part, except for the one picture where it's taken from the sidewalk, would block your proposed north sign?
No, because that, you can see that in the view of every one of those pictures, except maybe the one from the sidewalk. You can see the blanks.
The sidewalk one has the best view, but most people aren't going to be driving on the sidewalk. I think the other ones, in my interpretation, is that...
When those trees leave out, you won't see it.
Yeah, but that's, you're not, really not going to be able to see that southbound on Route 9 with those trees.
Well, I disagree because I can, I've driven down there many a time looking at just that because it's been, I mean, it's taken us now, what, this is four years to actually, you know, make the decision to, to say we need that signage there, only because our patients are telling us all the time, I didn't, I went, I drove right by you, I didn't know this is where you were, and that's a problem for us.
Well, tell me this, the Hudson Harbor Monument sign, that seems pretty visible, right?
Well, it's visible when you're pulling out of Price Choppers.
Well, I think it's...
Yeah.
...visible before then, but when you're southbound on Route 9. But I agree that your upright sign, the freestanding sign, is, is blocked by trees.
Yeah.
Is there any chance of, you know, could you do a lower monument sign? Do you think that would increase visibility at all?
I don't know. We haven't looked at that option yet at this point in time, because obviously we were looking to go in this direction.
All right, and... And you know that, you saw the county response?
Yes.
Okay. And so what do you think about their proposal that you would remove one or more of the signs that are existing?
The, the issue there is on the actual entrance, you know, we could, let's say we took that sign off and moved it to the north side, which is going to be a similar type of sign, but then we've got a retail space or a leased space. Right now, it's a Poughkeepsie uniform company, and then it's us, and my feeling is if we took that sign down, then they would not necessarily know which business, you know, where to even enter our business. You know, there's, there's doors, there's private entry doors, and, you know, so that really indicates, hey, this is where we are, this is where you walk in once you've pulled into the parking lot.
What about the, that sign at the west end of the parking?
Yeah, I mean, again, that, if we were to take that sign down, is that what you're asking? And then to put the other one up? I mean, certainly that might be an acceptable variation of that. You know, the only reason we, we really wanted to put that sign in where it was is because there was no signage on the north side, and we thought people leaving that parking lot would recognize that sign and understand who we are. Hudson Harbor was going to have the sign on the other side, the pedestal there, and for some reason, they decided not to, even though we built the pedestal for them. So that's just sitting blank at this point in time.
And then there is a question about a tree on Van Sikklen Drive? Are you responsible for that at all?
A tree? What does that have to do with signage?
It has nothing to do with it, but we got a public comment asking about the tree that died that was part of the site plan.
To my knowledge, there hasn't been a tree that died, is that? I, I took pictures of a tree. When they first mentioned something about that years ago, I took a picture of the tree with leaves on it, so I'm not sure what tree they're referring to. And I sent that to the town, actually, and said that if this is the tree they're referring to, it's live and breathing.
All right. Christine, any questions?
Isn't there a sign, another sign on the road that, that goes along the side of the building, like from Hudson Harbor?
There is a pedestal sign.
So there's also a pedestal, a pedestal sign there?
Yeah, there's a small pedestal sign. That's the one that Chairman was referring to, I believe.
So then that would be like five signs?
Yeah.
A total of five signs for...
No, there's three currently.
There's three currently, and...
We're asking for a four.
But isn't this one, isn't this one, there's not one in the front? I mean, there's...
There's the tall one.
There's the, yeah, there's the tall one.
One over the front door.
Oh, correct, you're correct.
One on the east side.
You're correct, yes.
It's a lot of signs. No, that's all, no questions.
Art?
I think you already mentioned it, and the east facing, the one that faces Route 9, if that could be moved to your side, should probably fill all your problems because you got the tall sign on the front, you got your sign over your entrance. I don't, with the county denial, I don't, I wouldn't be able to vote for an extra sign, just so you know. I think moving the other sign would be more than sufficient.
And would we need to go through the variance process to move that sign?
Same-sized sign, just new location, I don't know.
Well, you would be conditioning the approval of this sign on the removal of that. So that's how that would work.
Yeah, I, I, without consulting with timely signs, I don't want to step out of my lane and say, oh, this is something we can do by just removing the sign with the same sign. I don't know if that's something we can do or whether we have to create the new sign just based on the space and electrical and things like that. I have no idea, so.
Okay. Phyllis?
The pedestal sign in the front, you're at the very top panel.
Correct.
And it is difficult to see you through the trees. Have you given any thought to moving down lower?
Well, again...
Because that, that would give you visibility.
Yeah, again, we, we haven't thought about that because we were hoping to get the variance to get the sign on the north side, but again, I would have to consult, you know, how and what we can do with that, and, you know, if that's an option.
Thank you.
Tony? No, all my questions are asked. Tony?
Yeah, a couple of comments. I believe we gave you a variance for that one on Hudson Harbor Drive that...
Correct.
Okay, so we did do that. I'm not sure that what you're looking for is going to be seen by anybody other than people in that parking lot. I don't know if that's going to be any, any kind of an improvement for you for people driving down Route 9, given the other trees. And, you know, I think what the county said makes a certain amount of sense. Maybe, you know, if you're willing to remove one of the, one of the ones you've got closer to Route 9, that, you know, that might be the only way that anybody here would be interested in, I can't speak for anybody else, but for what you're looking for. I think what you're looking for doesn't do what you think it'll do, among other things.
Well, I've had several people come to me and say that's where we need to have signage, so I'm basing it on public interest as well.
Okay. But the other thing is, there's a, there is a county recommendation, and if we go against their recommendation, you know, it's got to be by a supermajority, and we have to have a reason, right? So I'm not sure we have a reason.
And, and if I could add too, I mean, we wouldn't necessarily want to spend $16,000 on another sign, just to have another sign. I mean, we're, we, we really feel that this facility has not grown as fast as we thought it would in this area, and we feel a lot of it is visibility. I go out to community events all the time, and people are like, now where are you located? And they don't even know. And so, you know, for us, we're looking at anything we can to, to build this place because we'd hate to have, to leave that space that was basically a torn-down, you know, ugly facility for many, many years, and hopefully everybody feels it's a beautiful facility now.
Someone just came in. Do you have anything to do with the application for 2555 South Avenue?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, why don't you come on out?
Grab a chair.
State your name.
So, my name's Paul Biker, and I'm the president of Timely Signs in Kingston.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that, that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right, so the application's been pretty much described, but perhaps you can give some more indication about why you think this is an appropriate spot for the sign?
Well...
If you do.
To be honest with you, the plaza that this sign faces has a fair amount of traffic as long, and as well as Down Harbor Drive. It's, it's the widest portion of the building. It's an extensive elevation, and I know there was some concern about a 60-square-foot sign setting a precedent, but by the own, your own regulations, the square footage is actually 40% less than what your formula allows for, up to 100 square feet.
So just so you're clear, I don't think our concern is the size of the sign, but rather the number of signs on the building or around the building.
Well, we only have two wall signs. One faces out toward Route 9, one faces south, and there's really nothing facing north. And with a monument...
Well, you have the freestanding, freestanding sign.
Well, the freestanding sign is 32 square feet.
And then you have the one on Hudson Harbor Drive.
Right. Yeah, the one on Harbor Drive is more of like, I would consider that, directional, it's fairly small. I think it's only about 10 or 12 square feet most, and for drivers going down there, it is, you know, parallel to them. So there's also a fairly substantial stand of mature trees that kind of block the viewpoint, and while the client, and, you know, we've worked with Emergency 1 on all their signage, in that particular location, as you're headed south, you've got some probably 30-foot trees, roughly, and normally a sign of the height that the monument sign is, is, is fairly high, and you would see that from a longer vantage point, especially at the speeds for that road. With that mostly, for most of the time of the year, those trees have foliage on them, it's fairly dense. I don't think people are seeing, headed south, I don't think a lot of people are seeing that monument sign because by the time they get up to it, it's below their sightline.
I'm glad you brought that up because before you got here, there was a comment, I believe it was Phyllis, about the, the pylon sign, the height of the pylon sign. If that were brought down to basically be a monument sign, do you think it would be more or less visible than it is today? Because I think that, because the canopy that you're talking about really is the issue.
Right, yeah, the tree canopy, you know, it's like anything else. The further I am away from it, as I get closer, it's...
You won't see it from really far away, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think that would help. Again, it's only, you know, a four-foot by eight-foot sign, and...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but there's a, a real estate sign below the uniform sign, and you can't miss that when you're driving down on a pylon. I'm just...
So here's my, I'm going to make a suggestion if everyone agrees with this. The county conditioned approval on, on the removal of some signs, or at least a sign. And so I don't want you to make any decisions tonight. I'm going to suggest that we adjourn this for a month for you to come up with some alternatives which involve the removal or moving of a sign in order to accomplish what you want to do. I want you to also consider, though, the fact that several of us don't seem to think that, that north sign location will provide you with the advantages that you think that will be there. So I'm going to suggest that, I'm going to suggest that you consent to an adjournment, that you consider some alternatives to removal or moving of the signs that are existing, and also come up with some better illustrations of how you think that the, that north sign that you're proposing is going to be visible and an advantage to you, if that's acceptable.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
If we want them to come back, and it probably would behoove them to come back at a later date, and they do a rendition of the sign on the north side, you should also be able to put those trees and put foliage, all those trees, to give us a line of sight and see if you can actually see that sign coming south.
Okay.
Okay? Just a thought.
Is that, is that acceptable to everybody?
Absolutely. All right, we'll consent to adjourn, and we'll come back with a revised plan.
Okay, so just so everyone's clear, you're going to come with some alternatives that would satisfy the county?
Okay.
By, by either the removal, or I think for us, the moving of perhaps that pedestal sign, or some other way to accomplish what you want to do and what the county is looking for, and reducing the impact of all those signs. and reducing the impact of all those signs on the building.
Okay.
Okay? And again, some illustration showing southbound of Route nine, the visibility of the proposed sign. Okay?
Yep.
Right. And Chrissy, if they have any questions, or would you be able to answer those questions?
I'll answer for her.
Okay.
She might not be, yeah, we can.
So then I'm going to move that we adjourn this to, I think it's December 11th?
Yeah.
December 11th.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, signature by I.
I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sonya, I have two things for the record. Does anyone need a break or are we going to get the deliberations finished? Okay. So.
It's getting late.
So, Oakwood Partners, does anybody have any concerns?
I, again, I, we granted the KeyBank sign. This is a little bit larger. I don't see any issue. They've agreed to dim the lights at night in honor of our zoning code. I'm okay with it.
All right, and, you know, the county recommended to deny this, so we need a supermajority. Christine, you okay?
I'm okay with it.
Phyllis? Tony?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
That, I think we need to do it, yeah?
I did it, yeah.
I move that the ZBA determined there are no other involved agencies and declares that we lead agency for the action.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signature by I.
I.
And I move that the ZBA determined that the action would not have a significant adverse effect on the impact, on the environment and issue a negative declaration. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signature by I.
I.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Well, we're not done yet. Christine, you might make a motion.
Sure.
Sit down, relax.
Number four, okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signature by I.
I.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
I agree.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right, so we'll go back to number two. Ten Hollow Lane. This is a request for a six-foot fence in the front yard in front of the house. So they pointed out that they would accept, that they could accept the, what the code allows. So in, in that case, I think we can move to deny the application.
Right, which would mean they put up the forty-two with no problem.
Right. And then if they want to put some landscaping, they can do that.
I'm okay with it.
Can they place it where they want to, twenty feet?
If they wanted to.
So I would just ask the, the board, are you, because the, this requires them to have the fence in the back be six feet per part of it and then drop down to forty-two feet. It, it really is the, the one part that would face the road that would be of the most concern as opposed to the parts that, well, maybe the front part also that faces the other road. But question whether the board wants to allow the six feet in the back of the property line or whether just forty-two feet in the front yard? Forty-two inches?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not inclined to increase, I'm not inclined to grant them anything other than what the code allows, so.
My question was going to be, so if they wanted shrubbery, would they have to come back for a variance at that? So it'd be good to move forward?
Nice arboridie. Okay. So then I guess I'll make these findings. Whether an undesirable change would reduce the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties would be created by granting of a variance based upon the lack of similar fences in the area, I think it would be a change in the, in the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, the applicant did agree that they could be satisfied with what's allowed in the code. Yes?
There are some of those white fences in the neighborhood. About half a dozen were spotted driving around. Not in the front yard.
But not in the front yard.
Yeah, not in the front yard, but yeah.
Whether the area requested, whether requested area variance is substantial, yes. And the fact that they're, they're not allowed, then yes, that variance would be substantial. There are no evidence of any adverse effect on, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. It certainly was. And although that's not a reason to deny it, I, I offer that it was certainly self-created. And I offer those findings. I'm offering, you can have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you mind making a motion?
I move that the board approve the.
No.
Where are we? That we deny the request set forth in item two. Two. This decision is based on a review, a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings, and results of site visits by board members. In denying this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, signature by I.
I.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to night of number three, forty-seven Marple Road. This is an addition into the front yard setback because there's a corner lot. Anybody have any concerns about this one? Then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change would produce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties would be created by the granting of a variance. There's no further encroachment on, first of all, this is a corner lot, so it has two front yards. And there's no further encroachment into the front yard lot line than the existing home. Secondly, the topography of Ray Boulevardists and the mature vegetation there blocks any impact that the addition would have. And so there's no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance based upon the positioning of the primary residents and what they want to do, this is the only way to accomplish that. Whether the requested area variance is substantial mathematically perhaps, but because there's no greater encroachment into the front yard lot line than existing home, it's negligible. Whether the proposed variation, variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence of any physical or environmental impact. And whether the difficulty was self-created, it certainly was. But that's not a reason in this case to preclude the granting of the variance. And I offer those findings. Phyllis, do you mind making a motion?
Of course. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the board, offered in the public hearing, and as the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair. So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signature by I.
I.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, and that brings us to, there's a request by the planning board to be lead agency for Beacon Residential, 297 Violet Avenue. If you want to describe what that application is.
If some of you recognize this project, that's because it's been here twice. It was approved twice. And both times, the project expired. So as Art said earlier, hopefully, third time is the charm. And, yeah.
They can keep coming back, though, right? There's no set.
He can keep coming back. He starts over from scratch every time. So hopefully, he doesn't, you know, come back.
Yes. All right, so then I move that we accept the planning board's request to be lead agency on Beacon Residential, 297 Violet Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signature by I.
I.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I, I move to adjourn and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. There was a second to that?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signature by I.
I.
That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.